I think I'm gonna open it to the floor and find out what everybody wants to do. I think we should do something, a letter?
I did when I was out there that day.
I mean, you see something like that happen in town.
Tremendous.
You gotta say wow.
Selfless, selfless on her part, you know.
Is it possible to, I mean, just thank her, tell her in the future if she wants to donate a town of vital points, honestly?
Yeah, well, I wanna...
She's done stuff behind the library. She was playing balls down there, too.
She does stuff all the time, all the time around town. And I...
Pretty nice.
But I wanna, I don't know how to acknowledge it, whether you do it with a letter or...
She did a lot of that, yeah.
I'm looking for ideas, guys.
I would say it's the letter we signed it.
Um, one thing is, we, do we have any type of cemetery maintenance budget? Do we have anything like that?
The cemeteries all have their own organizations and they all have a treasurer. And anytime a disbursement is made, I'm just, I want to understand this a little bit. It is directed by Steve and Paula Davis. Um, the Cemetery Association President and Treasurer. They direct somebody to make a payment, but the Tim, I think his name's Tim, who does the mulling. Tim will submit his hours to Paula. Paula will say, okay, for cemetery, $1,000, East Side, you know, whatever, and they'll draw checks from there. And they take in, each cemetery takes in money from burials and, um, any other kind of thing. And also the plumber fund gives them a quarterly dividend payment for each of the cemeteries, which has partially dwindled down to nothing. It'll, it'll get up again in July, but for almost a year now, it's been partly nothing. So it might be something we ask Paula, if it's Paula, and ask if we can...
I think she should be reinforced with, you know, just attaboy kind of comment. This kind of activity needs to get recognition. And I think the least we can do is write a letter on behalf of the town of Wentworth to thank her. Um, I think it should probably go to the town board and any other areas? Because that kind of behavior, if you're trying to behave your town, we...
Would a gift certificate to a, um, a nursery, a nursery be appropriate? So she could buy all those and all those, I mean, she really likes to pay, is that what you're saying?
No, no, you know, I think that would be insulting to her.
Yeah.
So I would say, I think a gift certificate, I mean, and let her, let her do whatever she does. I mean, it's magic, which is good around town.
I guess...
Hang on, I got one question.
Yep.
Do we have discretionary funds to, to give her a gift certificate?
Yeah.
Sorry. You know, maybe in the future we can do something like that. Generally, like a nice upkeep of the cemetery, so I think that was an awesome, you know, idea. But, you know, maybe, maybe it can be a regular thing in the, in the future that we can, you know, um, somehow, you know, reinforce with a budget line item possibly, or I'm not sure if that's typically something that towns would do to allocate, um, but, uh, you know, again, maybe we can chat with the things.
Nothing's been done with the various cemetery associations, like hardly any, no meetings with the trustees. She has set up a meeting with the trustees and they're all gonna talk and I also gave some information from the New Hampshire region about training trustees, cemetery trustees. And they're gonna talk and Francis is one of the trustees and he knows a lot, so he'll pick them one up. She's actually taking initiative to, um, I mean, they don't have a chairman, they just have a board of trustees.
I just wanted to throw her a hand.
They don't do anything.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, uh, since you were on the board of, uh, financial trustees, is there a perpetual care fund with the cemeteries?
There is.
Okay, there is, okay, I wanted to make sure, alright.
But it hasn't, they haven't had to use it at all because the plumber and burials have been supporting the cemeteries enough. Even though they came to a point where they had no money, or something that they would draw on that.
Okay, well, it should be a perpetual care fund, okay.
Okay, so who's gonna draft the letter?
I'm not, uh, I'm not sure, I, maybe, maybe, maybe we could work on something like that.
I think...
I'll, I'll, yes, we'll put it together and do it.
Yeah, and, you know, we...
I feel like you swallowed a canary for the last thing.
I'm not, I'm not...
I didn't even get a sentence out.
Um, I'm sure, I'm sure we, you know, between the four of us, we have a nice...
Let's do that stuff together, okay. Okay, uh, police report?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank the board members. Um, I'm here on behalf of Chief Trot tonight, who cannot be here, so he did provide the report to me. It's several different paragraphs, what I'll do is I'll just go with each paragraph and pause between in case there's any questions. Uh, I'm not familiar with this activity, so I really can't speak to anything beyond that. Um, so, um, WPD Activity Report presented 5/18/2021. Please note that the following is a summary of notable activity conducted by the Wentworth Police Department, WPD, but does not quote all, end quote, of WPD's activities during this timeframe. The WPD assisted elderly Wentworth resident with issues she is having with her phone service. The problem had been discovered when the resident sustained a head injury and attempted to call 911 and then was later unable to contact the local hospital. Chief Trot was able to contact the phone company and have the repair order expedited due to the circumstances. Chief Trot took a motor vehicle complaint regarding what was reported as reckless driving on the Wentworth Village, Royal Goldman Commons. The report was received after the incident, but the registered owner of the vehicle was contacted by law enforcement and he was made aware of the complaint and warned regarding his manner of operation. Chief Trot handled two complaints regarding the operations of an OHRV on a public way. Chief Trot wants to remind the public that there are no public ways in the town of Wentworth that are open to OHRVs. Future complaints regarding OHRVs will be handled on an individual basis and enforcement actions will be taken if needed and/or warranted. Chief Trot completed a sex offender registration with a Wentworth resident who was mandated to do so by statute. The required paperwork was completed and then forwarded to the Sex Offender Registry in Concord. Chief Trot arrested a Warren resident on an electronic bench warrant as well as for operating after suspension. The arrest was made without incident and the subject was later released on personal recognizance bail by the Plymouth District Court. Chief Trot took a theft report from a Went, uh, Wentworth property owner. It was reported that four newer truck slash SUV tires that had been stored on a construction trailer and was for sale had been stolen sometime during a week period, a week time period, when the property owner was not there. The value of these tires were estimated to be approximately $1,300 for all four. The matter remains under investigation. Chief Trot received a welfare check request from a business owner employed. The business had not heard or seen from an elderly Wentworth resident for some time and they were concerned for him. Chief Trot went to the resident's home where he made contact with the resident and made him aware of the concern. Keep, uh, the resident was fine, but did have some recent phone issues and he assured Chief Trot to contact the business and make them aware that he was fine. Chief Trot had also had that information conveyed to the business. Chief Trot took part in two bus evacuation drills with WES, which is the elementary school, which they are mandated to conduct several times during the school year. The drill, the drills were executed without incident and the students, staff and bus drivers did an exceptional job. Chief Trot assisted Jared King and Bruce Welch with traffic control while they conducted their tree and road project for the town on Ellsworth Hill Road. Chief Trot wants to comment on how careful and professional both Jared and Bruce were during this project. They did a great job and were very mindful of not just the local traffic, but also the property they were working on and the building properties and the road itself. And this one is titled Old Business Alloper, is... Chief Trot did speak with Dan Baum, the owner slash manager of Rum Town Racetrack regarding the noise complaint on Sundays. Dan Baum has assured me that the noise on Sundays is not coming from the racetrack and that there are no racetrack activities. And he's been given... Eaters on Sundays tuned up, but that noise is not coming from the racetrack. I am also aware of the previous complaints that I have dealt with regarding race cars being tuned up off of North Dorchester Road, one on Evans Road, but I have not received any noise complaints in that area for over a year now. And this is I, Chief W. Trot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to ask one question?
Sure.
Um, any idea, uh, I have to ask this, the sex offender registration, is that a new resident or existing? Any idea?
Uh, I can't speak to that, sir, I, I'm not familiar with the particular registry qual, uh, requirements of, of that person and if it's new or, or ongoing or renewable.
Okay, thank you.
Where does that information located if you wanted to find it as a resident, it's just online?
Uh, the state police are the, kinda like the, the clearinghouse, if you will, that control all of that. Um, and if you go to the, under the Department of Safety, then down to, to the New Hampshire State Police Division, there is a link in there that tells you, um, the different sex offenders.
You can look in your town.
You can look in your town, right? It, it will show every, every town in the town, in the state. And you can look them up by name and so forth, that are, that are required to, um, by their convictions. There's some diff, there's some changes in there which, uh, some require only so many years, some require a lifetime. It's, it depends on statute that, that was filed.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Jeff is not gonna be here tonight, he's overloaded with work. Um, he's sending this written report. Uh, they had two mutual aid calls recently, um, when we were a cover truck and a crew for Rumney Fire, where we were out on the first of all, Forest Fire in Rotten near the Heburn. And they followed up as a cover truck the next day for Rumney, but soon diverted to Brushfires Fire in Dorchester. In both runs, we had a great response, uh, great response times and manpower times. They had two, two training, uh, episode, uh, two different training programs over the last two weeks. Hose and nozzle setups, uh, not commonly used. And then the Wednesday night training, they utilized the older crew to work with the greenies on downing air packs and understand the gauges, regulators and getting them comfortable working with those tools. It's really important for them to get that done in a non-eremesis situation. Um, also, he's making, there's been an increased request for campfire permits, um, which is not uncommon for this time of the year. And a reminder, a permit, uh, they, he wanted me to remind everybody that a fire permit is needed for any outside burning, um, be it in pit or any other fa, fashion. Um, and his report is submitted. Paul?
Uh, we started and we had finished, uh, for the most part, the Saunders Hill Road Bridge. Um, we just have maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty screws left to put in, uh, runners on the bridge. Guardrails all back up, everything's back. Just get some cleanup that'll probably happen Thursday, I'm guessing. Uh, so that project is one of our bigger projects for years over. We also are starting to finish up the Elderwood Hill project. That is, uh, Larry's done with the hammering, finished today. We made huge improvements on that road, huge improvements.
No, he was hammering further up.
Yep, we had, uh, like, we had one fall out past the dam that the road narrowed up to like eight feet. There's a piece of ledge and he worked almost all day yesterday on that. We've got it so we can gravel over the top of it and...
Okay.
There was four other pieces, past the cell phone tower, headed downhill, and he got those all this morning. Uh, you can drive up there and you'll be able to tell, we just put the ledge on the stack and back and packed it in. Uh, but two of the corners are, you can see around them.
Did Jared and him work together on that?
Yep.
Were the two machines?
Yep, both of them have been working together.
Down on the curb?
Yep.
Um, where you got the culvert in, are you gonna do any more clearing on the uphill side of that? Or you finished with all your explanation and everything?
We are, well, Jared was still working when I pulled, when I got here. Um, we should be almost done tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I'm guessing we should be done, there won't be, there's two small headlocks we're gonna cut. I don't know if you were up there this afternoon?
I was up there this morning.
So the big rock that was sitting up there, that is now missing, it's gone.
The big rock's gone?
That big rock is gone.
Where'd it go? It's big?
In little pieces like that now. Um, so that's gone and we took a couple of more trees to get up through there.
The rock was about half as big as this room?
It might have been as big as this room.
Yeah.
It's gone and we will put in another coal sleep tomorrow or Thursday.
See, last week was National Police Week, um, and the president made a proclamation during the, the week of Police Week from this, this Sunday, Sunday that the flag, he voted to have staff in remembrance of, of those officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty. However, there was a little bit of a snafu, I guess, if you will, this week, where I guess the president made that proclamation and then made a revision to it, um, with regard to memorial, getting prepared for Memorial Day, um, whereas the practice had always been that the flags are lowered in remembrance for Police Week from Police Week until Memorial Day, which is that, you know, that sometimes will be, well, this year it's a little early and it, uh, it happens every few years, I guess, where it's, it's a two week gap as opposed to a one week gap. So the flag were then directed back up to full staff for the fifteenth, which was the last day of the Police Week. Our governor then got involved and made...
Let's keep it half staff.
Exactly. And that's, that's what Chief Trot had felt should be done, was following Governor Sunnys recommendation. That's why, so we don't need to do a motion here. And I, I don't know what your protocol is for that, but it is currently at half staff in, in remembrance under, under Governor Sunnys' order.
Well, the governor had already put that in place and, uh...
Well, we need to push through this stuff.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, on the gravel pit? We gotta learn to do that now. Okay, any other questions on the gravel pit? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, okay, FEMA obligations regarding the bridges. Jordan King, did Paul get back to you?
Yeah, so I, um, I CC'd everybody the last few.
Right.
And then I emailed Paul Hatch today because he told me yesterday or the day before, a couple days ago, something like that, he said he had a meeting today with Vanessa Urango, which I think is part of the CHSM department. So I emailed him back today and said, we're very interested to hear what comes of this meeting. So that was this afternoon and...
You haven't heard anything?
No, I can check the phone, but...
Yeah, why don't you check the phone, because tomorrow I'm gonna be talking with Ken Horchak from FEMA.
Yep, I can get to it right here, I'll send you.
And Paul, he's, Paul Ford's boss and Paul Ford's in charge of all of them.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, I mean...
I don't have any email.
Okay, that's fine.
The email that Chris Fordius and Paul Hatch sent, I mean, that one's not super promising without any... I mean, for...
The problem is...
I mean, it sounds like it's fifty fifty right now.
They saw it coming, basically. They, they've seen that on these other ancient storms, that there's been this pushback. So they were getting together early to have the things that they've been complaining about in these other projects that they knew was coming, and then it came. And like you said in this email, he's frustrated because they haven't, all of these ancient projects are now getting more scrutiny. Yeah, see, help up.
In a nutshell, when FEMA had, and I talked with a person in Washington who organizes this, he said, when you have a disaster and a disaster occurs in a town, there's an emergency management team that comes in and they manage the whole thing. They do, that emergency management team stays in place for three years. The town didn't do anything in that three year period of time. The emergency management team that was put in for the 217 flood was disbanded. It's then, but no, it's moved to...
Yeah, right.
The border, or it's moved to another disaster. They can't keep these people in place until the town gets off their ass and does something. Okay, so we're coming in to do something as this FEMA project is transitioning from an emergency project into a town aid project. And that's a whole different, um, administrative process that goes into it. So the, we're cal, you know, because we were lazy and approaching the solution, we're paying the price right now. Now, we may be on the bill to fix these bridges ourselves, which is gonna jack the tax rate in this town up huge. Because the state requires us to build, to do these bridges. If people sell the tax rate bought by a couple of dollars last year and FEMA doesn't come in and support this, this tax rate's gonna go off the chart. Because we're obligated to fix those bridges by state law. That in a nutshell is what happened.
And if you don't fix it...
That's the worst case scenario.
And if you don't fix it...
That's the worst case scenario, but from, I had a good frank conversation with Ken Horchak from Washington and he, he understands our problem. He understands that we're not trying to beat the situat, you know, to beat the system, that we're trying to solve the problem. And he's gonna talk to Paul Ford, who's in Boston, he's the regional director, and see if they can move this thing along. Now, I, I don't know if the guy's glad handing me because he's in Washington or what, but that's the answer they got. But he was pretty frank in the discussion, that our procrastination as a town, between 217 and two, in 2020, is what set this town up for disaster. A financial disaster. Does that answer your question?
It does answer my question, it's just too bad.
You know, I've been on the phone since our last select committee, just trying to beat down the trees and figure out where, where, where the delay is. Now, he'd say, he said, he, you had mentioned it might be a delay with the lawyers. I, there's three lawyers that are responsible, I talked with each one of them.
Okay, great, hopefully it moves forward.
Yeah, it's stuck in the federal government.
And it's a bad taste to be stuck, yeah.
I didn't even get to the East Side Bridge, crush me there, so... Uh, okay, anything else?
No, sir.
So I just feel like we're treading water, it's frustrating. Okay. Is Bernie Sullivan here?
It's Jerry Kennedy. She has, she's on the board of the SAU school.
Right.
They also have their meetings on Tuesday nights, and it's like the first and third, so she's gonna have one odd night where she's gonna be able to return. She's gonna look at her calendar. And she said also if she gets out early or if the meeting is delayed, you know, canceled for any reason, she'll come.
Yeah, we gotta find some alternatives for education in this town, because really it's way too expensive. I mean, you can, for what we pay per student, we could send all these kids to homeless.
UNH.
UNH? College, we spend more for students in this town than we go to college.
But she's going to tell you that everything, all the efforts to reduce this have been exhausted.
Oh, good, so why don't we send the kids to a charter school?
No.
Why don't we homeschool?
It's not only us, it's all towns.
It's state law that's screwing it up, right?
It's, um...
Somebody's gotta do something, because you have, it's breaking the towns.
It's the federal no child law behind the law.
Right.
That is the one funded by the federal government and they've put the responsibility on the states. And so you can guess where it is from there.
The state, it's all the town.
The state, yeah, so, um, the state doesn't have a lot. It, it, it's because of all the special needs and...
Well, why don't we put, why don't we just develop a, my, my philosophy is, let's send the kid, either combine school systems, you know, to make it more cost efficient, or send all the kids to the charter school down at Rumney.
Well, I think they have a limited...
I know, but if, if all of a sudden they get the funds from Wentworth, they can expand.
We can make a charter school.
Say again?
We could make a charter...
Oh, we could make a charter school here, Paul, out of the SAU. We own the property.
Well, I know, it's a lot higher up, you have to...
Well, and, you know, it can be as high up as, you know, the sky, but we gotta solve the problem. Go ahead.
There is an organization in New Hampshire that is addressing this issue that you're talking about. The School District Governance Association of New Hampshire. Not to be confused with the School Board Association, which is a state entity which gets funded, but that state funded entity uses that money to lobby against the towns to, to protect their children. So the School District Governance Association of New Hampshire, again, it's a private organization.
Right.
And they're, and they're working on this and they've, they've been putting on workshops the last month and a half. And the last one was about, it's not about the money. Uh, and who's in control, you, you raised one of those issues, Linda, with what you just said. The, the wrong people are exercising their proper control. The school boards, members of the school board don't know what they're supposed to do in many instances. And as a result, the wrong people are controlling what's going on. And it's not a matter of money, it's a matter of...
Control.
Control and there are, some students will learn at a faster rate and other students will learn at a slower rate. So it's, it's not about the money. And in some instances, the, the parents and the school, uh, the towns don't even know how many employees there are at the school. Uh, they, they have a pretty good idea of who the teachers are and how many teachers there are, but as to how many, what are the ones that help the teachers, what, what do they call them?
A's.
A's.
Teachers, A's.
Many times, you don't know how many? Like, A's there are. So this SDGA NH has a wealth of information. Donna Green is the president and, uh, I can, I can get you, you know, I can get you some of that information so you can...
Yeah, I appreciate it, because, you know, and, and that plays right into, you know, I looked into it since our last budget thing with the school board, I was still trying to figure out where all our expenses came from. And there's a great article which, which goes right to what you're just saying. The teachers' salaries have gone up minimum.
It was one percent according to that thing that we got in the...
Exactly, one percent. The real increase... Exactly, one percent. The real increase in the budget is in accessory staff. It's staffing. Now, that can be a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, and they're boom, 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 right down. But it's staffing. That's what's, they've increased their staffing. They have full-time nurses for sixty healthy kids. You don't need a full-time nurse for that. It's sixty grand a year. You just don't need that.
That article, I think, was it Bernie Sullivan that sent it? Said that since the nineties enrollment in your interest down six percent? But when adjusted for inflation, the cost was, I can't remember, fifty percent or almost double with six percent less students. And that the teacher-to-student ratio instead of being fifteen or sixteen to one is like eleven or twelve to one.
Right.
And with, again, with no child left behind though, too, though, there's aides that are mainly for certain children. And it's more upon. And where are the ones that made the law?
You're missing common sense. It's a common sound. Linda, can you?
I can send the information to Linda and I can send it to the folks on the select board as well.
If you don't mind, just so we can maybe occasionally ask for an update from them or something or.
There's all kinds of information. They have a website. Oh, they have a website that, you know, you can check all kinds of articles that, you know, they've been preparing and information that's there. So I will, I will send you that information. I happen to be a lifetime member. But I have a short lifetime. So I have a lifetime membership with them and.
That's wonderful.
It's a great organization.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, because I'm seeing a lot of parents after seeing what their kids have gone through with COVID. They don't want to put their kids back in school. They want to just.
Fifty thousand dollars a year. It's unsustainable. You can't do that year after year after year. You can't pay for it. It's impossible.
Yeah. Linda, you get that article?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the graph. If anybody's interested.
Just can't be done.
The, I'm seeing more and more people traveling around town, posting online about, you know, tax-related issues now, let alone, you know, this upcoming year. Um, it, it's something. And, and I'm glad that there is, um, you know, so much, I don't know, pressure starting to be put on this because I think it's going to be more and more difficult for folks to, um, you know, to pay their taxes. And we don't, we don't have any, we don't have any choice in this. And I, I feel like there needs to be a line drawn at some point. There's no, there's no line. It's, it's, it sounds like it's infinite, you know, whatever is needed and who makes that, who makes that decision, you know?
That's why I really wanted Bernie Sullivan to come and represent the SAU because I went to a meeting last September and I was told this is the way we do it. Or, you know, either like or take the highway. You know, they couldn't even explain.
I think that's a really bad, a bad mentality.
They were mandating taxes.
That was the SAU and our own school board that told us.
Yes!
Yeah, and then again, it was for a second time. We were told this is how it is.
And I, you know, I'll give Bernie Sullivan the benefit of the doubt that this is her second time. She's bailed on us to talk these issues out. And, you know, I, I want the SAU to present their position, but I also wanted to come with some solutions. You know, how can they, how can they justify the staffing that they're, they've got?
The schools added almost three dollars to tax rate in two years. We kept going down to flat budgets, but the school added almost three dollars in two years. And it could go up again.
I, I would suggest that, um, you know, if we're not getting representation to come to our meetings, that we really should try to push, um, getting.
To theirs?
To school board meetings.
Yeah, it's the twentieth is the next meeting.
Okay, I, um.
No, it's next month.
I thought it was May twentieth. I don't know, but I'm gonna go to it. I gotta do my calendar. I don't make calendars yet.
I think there was a request as well for them to sort of push their meetings up to be later at night because I think they're at four thirty.
Before.
Before, sorry.
People are right after the school day and they start.
Okay. People have got to go to these meetings.
And I know people.
People, they get to a meeting at four o'clock.
We get complaints about starting at five.
I know. There's a, there's a national.
I agree.
Excuse me, there is a national organization out there that's identified the month of July where people need to go to their school board meetings en masse. Get a lot of people to the school board meetings and, uh, you know, let yourselves, let your, let your voices be heard. Plus, I understand that there was a school board in Texas that in the last few weeks was ousted and a new school board was elected off the election cycle. So, I mean, people are, people are like us here in Wentworth, we're, we're taking action. And I can send you that other information as well about, uh, the school board, uh, people in their communities going out to these school boards and demanding, uh, that the school board members do what they should, statutorily are supposed to be doing. And, you know.
Okay, I remember the thing that I gotta add on to that. Thank you. I think, you know, there, there's a lot of, um, opinions and, um, I suppose opinions from, uh, from folks in town around taxes and that sort of thing. I think to really make a difference in the town, folks absolutely not just, not just the select board and select other people, but uh, everyone in town, if you're really unhappy with, um, you know, the taxes, you need to come to select board meetings, you need to go to school board meetings, you need to specifically go to budget hearings related to the town and the budget hearings related to the school as well. Um, it, the time is not to, to bring these issues up at the town meeting. It really needs to be done before that. Um, and I think we can all, you know, make a difference if we, if we really try to get, um, I'd say get ahead of this, but we're already kind of behind right now.
We're so far behind, right?
So, I mean, I, I really, whoever's watching this, I, I really think that you should plan on trying to come to more meetings, especially the budget hearings, uh, toward the end of the year, beginning of this upcoming year. Um, so we can make sure that whatever comes to town vote, it's already what we're looking for.
Doesn't, doesn't the school board have their budget hearing in July?
Summer.
In the summer?
It's in the summer. Okay, guys, I have two girls at the school, so I, I think any conversation about the money with the school board needs to also accommodate what the product is. What is good education?
Right.
So, um, that's, that's the common ground here that we're gonna make headway. If, if you say we need to cut and, and change what we spend, you guys need to look at, is the outcome that the state and governments and, and parents say that we need to have out of that school, how can we achieve similar outcome? Or how do we receive money from the, the organizations that are, are mandating specific outcomes? And I think when it's all money, 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 you're, you're gonna be off and right field. And there're gonna be product, 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 or outcome, outcome, outcome. You gotta, you gotta meet in the middle.
Right. Right now, the outcomes are not good.
I'll say.
The outcome studies of students nowadays compared to ten years ago, they're, they're dumbing down our students.
I, well, I'll say as a dad that, that elementary school is doing a great job. I, I, I see that. So I, I, I agree overall statewide, the outcomes are not necessarily the scores aren't, aren't nearly as good. Um, and so, but I'm just saying that we, that's where the discussion needs to kind of.
No, I, I think, I think it's great. You can't just talk money. Your point is you just can't talk money. You gotta talk product. But right now, the product's not good. And we're spending three dollars on the tax rate a year. But we're throwing money after a more deficient product.
Is, uh, I'm curious, over the last like five, 10 years at WES, have we seen the scores change within our school system?
The scores were better about five years ago.
About five years ago?
Yeah. It changed for instance.
Hmm, okay. And like, like, I think we're gonna make a lot more headway as a community if we kind of, if we stay outcome focused because you talked about going to other school districts, olderness and all these different, um, charter schools. That's similar money for a different outcome, right? Or similar.
They have better outcomes.
Yeah.
They have better outcomes.
Yeah.
The student would be getting a better deal. They have to travel.
Yep.
That's it. At least consider.
And, and the homeschooling kids are, are having better outcomes.
Yeah, well, that's.
I'm serious.
Yeah, that's not an option for all parents at work.
I know that, but I'm just saying, if a significant chunk of kids in school wanted to go on a homeschooling program, we should support that. If another chunk of kids want to go to a charter school, we should support that. We shouldn't necessarily have to support things that are not cost efficient.
Wentworth is in the top five in the state.
No, they were better five years ago.
I'm just saying, I mean, right now, they're in the top five in elementary schools in the state.
For two point two million, they better be.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I, I don't live here. I'm just stating. I mean, I'd be pretty proud of that if I was a Wentworth president and had a kid going there.
I know, but he brought up this topic.
No, no.
Well, I, I.
Okay.
But over sixty percent of the total taxes in this town.
Yeah, yes.
And there was about thirty people or so there. And there was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase that got sold through like that. And the only people that had any comments against it was the select board, I think Francis. And then it went right through. But then you go to town meeting and you have two to two and a half times representation for forty percent of the budget. People are going to the wrong meetings.
Yeah.
Sixty percent of the budget is getting half the people or less. That's all I.
I thought the school is almost seventy percent of the town budget.
It's over sixty. It's sixty, it's sixty-five percent.
Can I just say something? Sure. Wouldn't it be good to have a blog? To, you know, to residents, to meetings, to encourage them to go to meetings and, and let them know exactly what is happening. I mean, if you put it to them that sixty-five percent of the tax rate is dependent on the school budget. You know, just give them a little more information to chew on.
Well, if they watch this meeting on YouTube.
But people don't. People don't. Do, do you know how many people are on this one?
There was four or five.
But if you had a blog and it was on Facebook or wherever, Blogscope, I don't understand that. I think people would be more interested in that. And one person that is kind of giving good moves to the area is Mike Levis. Do you think that he would be somebody that would be good to come and listen in meetings and?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Because he writes his own newsletter and posts it. Um, he writes it for the town hall and I don't know of anybody else.
So he, um, I actually spoke to him about that. Maybe you can touch upon this more over, but I think he was trying to get that, you know, try to have like a much larger audience for that. Um, I, I had brought up the, um, I think the, uh, the Penny Saver that's out there, but he wanted to hit, I think, a larger audience with various types of articles and such. Um, I, I think that's an awesome, I thought what he was proposing was an awesome idea and it was much more on a, I think, uh, you know, individual basis that he was doing that, I think.
But I think something on.
Well, we had to get the word out and I think any way to get the word out to get people to participate in decisions by the school board is critical.
So just a suggestion. So, um, I'll talk about this in more detail later at a different time, but the current webmaster of the town website and myself, we got on to a phone call about a month and a half ago. This is trying, trying to do this during free time, but we were talking about, um, completely doing a redesign of the, the town website, um, which, uh, would make it much, much easier for, um, folks to have individual access to write up blog posts and such. Um, so the town website could be utilized much, much more than it currently is. It's just how it's built right now. It's, I, I feel it's very outdated. She agrees to it as well because it's really more so maintained right now. Um, so I, uh, I'm going to continue that conversation with her and do some testing on the side. Um, she's a web developer. I have web development experience myself. I mean, I've been in IT since oh seven or something. Um, so we'll, we'll continue on with that. I, I think, I think that's an awesome idea. I mean, I know I had suggested at one point we might do like a Facebook page, but it might be a better idea to put it on the town website. Um, it's much more official. We can, that could absolutely be done. That could absolutely be done. I'm not sure what either of you have to say about that at all.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
I'm against Facebook, but a website would be great.
Understood, understood.
Okay. Um, okay, I think that's, that's. Oh, wait a minute. Uh, I jumped on Elmer. But Elmer, this is for you and Andrew. This is the Grafton County Town Managers and Administrators, the broadband project. Uh, we just got an email, uh, Grafton County Fiber Backbone project information.
That's from Chris Coats, I would assume. That doesn't come directly from the commissioners. That's a committee that was set up by the previous board of commissioners and I know a little bit about it, but we, we met today and I don't think that letter or whatever you got was not discussed today at the commissioners meeting, but go ahead. I'm ready to interrupt Mr. President.
Yeah, previously, if you'd like, I can speak to it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this came from Karina Park. She's out of, uh, she, she's basically acting as an administrator for the Grafton County Broadband Committee. She's out of Camden, uh, Camden, Georgia. So what the, the email that the board received ultimately is asking for support for the Grafton County Broadband Committee and to build out a fiber backbone, which is ultimately a, just a net, a large network of fiber throughout Grafton County. Uh, as of right now, NAGC has already, um, uh, told us that they're going to deploy fiber to a hundred percent of Wentworth. Uh, but at the same time, I do believe in having choices. We don't really have much of a choice, you know, if we're taking a hundred percent of the town into account. Not everybody has the same choices. If you, if you live in certain areas, you can have spectrum. If you live in other areas, all you have to pick from is what consolidated is at right now. And that really isn't much of anything. Um, especially people, you know, I've been talking to lately about out of the hill or farther away from the center of town. Uh, so having some choices could be very better.
And I know a little bit about it, but we, we met today and I don't think, that letter or whatever you got was not discussed today at the commissioners' meeting. But go ahead. I couldn't mean to interrupt this.
Yeah, previously, if you'd like, I can speak to it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this came from Karina Park. She's out of, she, she's basically acting as an administrator for the Grafton County Broadband Committee. She's out of Camden, Camden, Thorson. So what the, the email that the board received ultimately is asking for support for the Grafton County Broadband Committee and to build out a fiber backbone, which is ultimately a, just a large network of fiber throughout Grafton County. As of right now, NHGC has already told us that they're going to deploy fiber to 100% of Wentworth. But at the same time, I do believe in having choices. We don't really have much of a choice, you know, if we're taking 100% of the town into account. Not everybody has the same choices. If you, if you live in certain areas, you can have spectrum. If you live in other areas, all you have to pick from is what consolidated that right now, and that really isn't much of anything. Especially people, you know, I've been talking to lately about out of the hill or farther away from the center of town. So having some choices could be very beneficial. NHGC again is going to bring various- Grafton County Broadband Committee is looking to handle the fiber- Because if we have NHGC, that's not going to cost us any money upfront, but-
Quick question. Does this, does us verbally supporting this, does that kind of influence the NHGC project? Communication, is guaranteed to commit?
No, no, it's not, it's not going to influence that. This, the NHGC project is already started. They're starting to do their survey and that sort of thing here. If they haven't done it already, it's going to be within the next month or two that they're going to start the project. You've already guaranteed us it's going to be maximum or about two years before 100% of the town has fiber. So that's, we're talking internet as fast as what you get down in Manchester. So we're, we're still on track for that. This is just going to be another choice, I think. We don't have, we're not making any specific decisions on whether we're absolutely going to support this in the end. We're just supporting their ongoing research at the moment, I suppose.
I wouldn't say if the board was supporting it, as long as it doesn't hurt, we're doing it.
I wish Jordan had left the room, but I, I can give you a little bit of data on that. When the county commissioners, again, this is before I came on the commission, when they set up the broadband, county broadband committee, my understanding is the broadband committee was not going to ask the county taxpayers for any money. So they've come and they've asked for money. The commissioners did agree to put $4,500 into this. Now, the broadband committee then requested a grant. And they, and they have received a grant, but the county committee has got to come up with a matching part of that. So they got a grant for $5,000, but they got to match that $5,000 with another $5,000 or with their $5,000. So they only got $4,500. So it's got to be another $500 coming from someplace. And I have a feeling they're going to come back to the county commissioners and ask for an additional $500. Again, my understanding was they weren't going to ask for any money from the county commissioners, from the county taxpayers. Now, the elephant in the room is the federal government, the ARCA money. I'm glad you're back. I wanted you to hear this. And I, I don't want you to get excited while I give you this figure. Grafton County is going to be given from the federal ARCA money, the American Relief Program Act. Are you sitting down when I tell you this? $17,475,000, maybe $65,000, but $17,465,000 is coming to Grafton County. It's supposed to be used for infrastructure and they specifically, what rules or what guidance we have from the federal treasury is water, sewer, and broadband for infrastructure. My understanding further is the state of New Hampshire-
And that could be the roads?
Yes, the definition of infrastructure, Mr. Chairman, is changing from week to week.
I could see that.
So, so we've got a meeting coming up, I think, next Friday, with one of the assistants from Senator Shaheen's office, who's going to talk about what the, what the rules and regulations are coming from the Treasury Department. At first, you know, they said you're going to get this $17,400,000 deposited into your bank account. Well, then they said, well, no, we're not going to give you all of that. We're going to give you some of it in, in June. And then we're going to give you some of it later on, and then some of it later on. And you're going to, you know, you're going to get it all by the end of 2022, but you've got until the end of 2024 to spend it. And you got to make sure you spend it on the right things. Because if you don't spend it on the right things, then you got to pay it back. But we don't have, we don't have the guidance from the, the feds to what we can use it for. But again, infrastructure is one of those things that we can use it for, but specifically water and sewer operations and broadband. So the state is also getting broadband, broadband money as well. So I, I think there's going to be, I hate to use this word, flood of money coming in. But be careful, your grandchildren, great grandchildren, and great, great grandchildren are going to be paying for this, okay? So anyway, and, and your children are going to be paying for that too. So that's, that's what little bit I know about the county broadband committee. They're out there, you know, doing their thing, and then periodically they report to the county commissioners. So I've received one or two reports from Chris Coats, who is the town manager for Bristol. And I think I've heard the name of the young lady that you just mentioned from Camden.
I've heard of her.
Yeah. So.
Thank you. Yeah, so what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is like to make a motion that we, I, I can respond to the survey indicating that we support further research into the Grafton County Broadband.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I just hope the infrastructure is going to be a little more road and bridges.
You have another bridge to build.
I know.
It could be, but I don't know yet.
I wasn't-
Sorry. No, it is. It's engineering now. Infrastructure's all engineering.
Oh, I don't know if it's the same project that you said you were going to do. But I got notified, I notified you last March that you were giving approximately $50,000. So I'm going to see that and be realistic. And they were supposed to give us $50,000 of it by the end of this month. The rest, I can't remember the rest is. And there are two things you can expect. One is any kind of additional first responder films, you know, that we have to do for our budget. Next, any kind of, when I have to do an analysis, shortage in the taxes due COVID. So I've got to analyze where our leads are, what they were previously, project them out.
Oh, that's fair.
And then the other ones, what you said was the project and then the water. That's, I've just been notified we should be getting that money.
Now, when you say water, is it management of rivers, erosion control?
No.
Water, when, when they move that water?
Well, we don't know. They're very broad categories. And no, they're coming out, I have two of them next week that we're going to outline. But they're coming out with, of course, the federal government probably has $5,000 in its document. But we went into this, you know, the summary of the two of those categories to let us know exactly what to, you can spend it on and what to plan for.
Yeah, I'd like to get things that target the water, what we need.
But I think-
Water, I don't know if that's more like city water.
No, what it is, it's, yeah, the water, sewer.
See, we don't have much city water.
It might have been COVID. I don't know.
See, that-
That's divert water. I mean, I don't know. You'll get more details.
Yeah, diverting water prevents floods and washouts and roads and stuff.
Yeah, so I don't think it prevents them.
One other thing that I maybe might help, we did get, we did get some ruling as to what some of the money could be used for, like infrastructure. It's kind of tortuous. If you, if the county or a community wanted to buy something and it was during the lockdown, but they didn't have the money because of COVID-19, then to buy what we needed, what you needed to buy during the pandemic, well, that may be one of the things that you can use this money for. But you have to be able to show that it was something that you had planned on buying during the epidemic, pandemic, but you didn't have the money. So I'm Italian, that's why I use my hands and walk around.
You mean like plow truck in the back home? Fire station?
Right. But you couldn't buy it. You, you wanted to buy it, but you couldn't buy it because of the pandemic. It's okay.
Okay, I think any other comments? I had two. I wanted to check on the Riverside Park and the Ball Field port bodies to see if they have been delivered or if they do.
I didn't know it was supposed to be before the war.
Okay, because that was my concern. Because it's already, it was 75 degrees. I didn't see them, so could we give them a call and just kind of? What about the balance? Do we have to do balance? Take it up to the blue here. I don't want to deal with a late out. I had it last year. I just want to make sure we're, we're good on this. We need to get a hold of that company this-
Well, you're supposed to have a board ready this week. So I'll find out the stats.
I'm just being sorry about- How that turned, remember last year? Yeah, I'll do that again. I had a second. In the payroll checks, Alan's check, he left his things. Was that supposed to come after his one year?
Yeah.
Which started this week.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't. Wow, really impressive. On the ball.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my comments were not part of my county commissioner report. I just got two things.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I, you know, I couldn't, because I spent a lot of time on the county commissioner job. So I'm glad your wife won that school board job, definitely. Thank her for me. Two things, if people go to JustOmer on YouTube, J-U-S-T-O-M-E-R, you're going to get these weekly reports from me on, on the JustOmer. The other thing is the budget, the proposed commissioners' budget has come out. And a copy has been sent to the, to the town. What's important, and this goes along with Seligman Lassers' comment, there is going to be a public hearing in front of the delegation and the commissioners on May 24th at, at 6 o'clock PM up at the county complex, probably at the UNH Cooperative Extension Conference Room on the first floor. And, and I believe this budget, folks, is also online. Go to the Grafton County website and you will see this, the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. It's online. And the, the important thing to know, Mr. Ahern worked very hard not to have any increase in the taxes, county taxes. However, because of the $1,200 shortage in revenue for the nursing home because of the COVID-19 lockdown and because of, I think I mentioned this before, the special $500,000 bill that the state of New Hampshire sent to Grafton County to cover the loss of the investment of the retirement, state retirement funds. All of the counties had to, and I believe the school districts had to come up with money. And so there was $1.7 million that the county had to take care of in this budget that was totally unexpected. But having said that, the amount of tax, the increase in the county taxes to the people of Grafton County is going to be 0.56%. 0.56%. So I tried and we're going to keep trying, but what is that squared dollar figure? What is that?
It's up to $1,048 more than last year, so. I had one to try to cover.
Yeah, it's a three-page letter from Finance Administrator Julie Libby in there. So that's, again, this is all on the internet, so you can look at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me this little bit of time. Remember, JustOmer. Thank you.
On YouTube?
On YouTube, yes.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'm going to go to the gym.
Second.
Oh, I'll go here?
Yes.